They've got an haircut.
Is that?
Here she is.
We'll get her slid in.
All right, we're starting.
Victor, is there anybody that's slid in?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay, all right. Doctor Worthen, you're ready to begin.
Okay, here we go. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so by Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 839-2537-9633, and the required password is 894776. All right, Mr. Baker.
Ms. Secome.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Ms. DeVenero.
Here.
Mr. DeSilva. Mr. Tanis.
Here.
Mr. Gala.
Here.
Mr. Kaczmarewski.
Here.
Dr. Park. And Doctor Worthen.
Here. At a good notice, the Agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on December 1st, 2022, in the Administrative Office at 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the Township Clerk. Salute to the flag. Ms. Secome, which will lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I don't think we require an executive session this evening, so let's go on to Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this Agenda. As a matter of fairness, you're asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. Motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. Kaczmarewski, second by Mr. Kaplan. All right, we are officially open. I see no members of our audience there. Motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Kaczmarewski, second by Mr. Kaplan. Turnover to Dr. Dettore for Superintendent's report.
Thank you so much. I have one thing to report on, and that's the presentation that we're going to do for the board. We're really happy to present this information to the board and to the community. We feel as though with our commitment to really explaining the process and making sure that everyone is aware of what's happening, where we are, and where we're going to go, we felt like it was important to put together a presentation that we could prepare for you, share with the community, and we're going to share it via email tomorrow, just so everyone is aware of exactly what's happening. I do want to clearly state the reason. Well, first, I want to thank everyone for taking the time to come to this special meeting. I know that it wasn't initially planned. The reason why we needed this special meeting was because we had a number of people provide feedback, whether it was board members, whether it was administrative team, when we shared the surveys out. We greatly appreciate all the feedback that we received from the board and administrative team to really continue to work with Us Squared to make this survey as applicable to Mawa as possible. We also needed this meeting because we are committed to making sure that all of our families receive these surveys to view, to talk as a family, really look through the surveys and have our students understand what they're going to be asked, but also, more importantly, have the parents have an opportunity to see what the children are going to be taking part in and make that decision on if they would like for their students to be a part of this process. It's my hope that we can have as many students as possible take part because their voices are extremely important. This is an opportunity for us to get really a broad understanding of all of the students and the families in which we serve, and our obligation is really to make sure that we're providing an educational experience to our community that serves them, no matter who they are. There were some questions, and understandably so, throughout the entire process. You can go to the second slide. There were some questions throughout the entire process along the lines of what the purpose of this survey is. There's also some concern as we were developing it along lines of, well, we surely asked this question, or we're missing something else. And I really want to clearly state to not only the board but the community that this survey is really one piece of our overall work. Oftentimes, and I know that, you know, in our history, we would provide a survey and then action would be taken depending on the results of the survey. That's not happening with this process, and the reason why it's not happening is because there are five opportunities for us to gather information, to really get an understanding of what that picture really is and what the experience really is in Mawa. And if you remember correctly, obviously, the town hall, which I was greatly, I was pleased with the turnout, I believe we were around 150 people total over the course of the two days, that we had people come out and share their feelings and their assessment of what Mawa and Mawa is all about and their experiences. We had that, we have the surveys that we have, we have our focus groups, we have the in-district audit and our walkthroughs, and then we also have that email setup for people to really provide their feelings along the lines of this process. So again, this survey is not the be-all, end-all, the final result. What this survey is really going to do is going to drive the focus of future work, whether it's driving the conversation in our focus groups, driving different questions and look-for's during our in-district audits, and really painting a picture of what would be next. So I just wanted to clearly state that because oftentimes we do survey and then action's taken. That's not the case here. Just to read through what our process is, as we all know, we took part in our town halls. They were already completed. This is the next step of our process, which is our student survey and our adult survey. Some of the feedback, which I greatly appreciate from the board, was really to add more people to the survey. We're not just going to survey our students, our staff, and our parents. We're going to make an effort to engage our recent alumni, and we're also going to try our best to have our survey posted wherever it can so community members can take part in the survey as well. Like I said before, after they gather this information, which they're going to do after the survey closes on December 20th, they're going to really create a strategy of how they're going to come in and organize the focus groups, but also start to identify areas that they're going to look for once they come in district to do their in-district walkthroughs, but also take a look at our curriculum, our policies, and our procedures, and as well as the in-school visits that they'll have an opportunity to talk to our students and our staff.
Great. So, and your places are copies of the surveys. If you haven't seen them yet, they're paperclips for you. We have a copy of each of those. So, I want to reiterate Dr. Dettore's point. Here where it states focus groups, it's really important that we emphasize that we're looking for a multitude of perspectives to take part in the focus groups. We've sent out the link for people to sign up. We're hoping that tomorrow morning, when we share the survey with our community, there will also be the link in there to give people in our community an additional opportunity to sign up. So we're going to talk about the administration of the survey and the details related to that, but I thought it was important first to talk about how the surveys are introduced. Each survey is written for each specific audience, as you can see here, so we have the introduction for each, the K-5 survey, the 612 student survey, as well as the adult survey. You'll see that obviously our student survey at the K-5 level is shorter and appropriate for the audience using age-appropriate language. You'll see in the 612 survey, it speaks to the fact that the information that students share will be kept confidential, and we'll talk a little further about that later in the presentation. And obviously, our adult survey for our parents, community members, as well as alumni and staff members, it's more thorough. So, and with that, the number of questions for each survey, as you can see in front of you, is altered based on the audience. So, our K-5 student survey is comprised of 28 questions. We'll talk about what those questions look like. Our student 6-12 survey consists of 46 questions, and our adult survey consists of 49 questions. And all information is going to be housed with our consultant. So I think it's also important to emphasize and reiterate the fact that all information is confidential, and it's not the district, it's the consultant that is going to be looking and analyzing all this information. So here, you'll see on this slide the themes as well as the question categories connected to each of our surveys. It's important to note that we've had parents ask about what is the area of focus here with regards to the surveys, and we're looking at a wide variety of themes in the district. It's not just about race, it's not just about sexual orientation, it's not just about gender. You'll see on the right-hand side of this slide, in each of the three surveys, it hits on each of these four categories: classroom culture, family and community engagement, instruction, as well as overall experience. And our adult survey has a fifth category, which is titled "Adult Leadership and Role Modeling." Our administrative team looked at all these question types and looked at kind of what are those overarching themes that are embedded throughout. A lot of it has to do with school culture, student ability, race, identity, and gender. And a lot of the questions have to do really about the student experience in the school. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. As you can see in the surveys in front of you, you'll be able to kind of scan through that to see what those question types look like.
A number of questions that were posed, whether it was during the town hall or just throughout the beginning part of this process, how were these surveys going to be administered? What are the dynamics of the surveys? So we felt like it was appropriate for us to just clearly detail how this is going to work. Along the lines of our hope to ensure that all of our students' voices are heard, we will be better scouring the surveys during school. At the elementary level and middle school level, we felt like it was important to create an environment that allowed our teachers to read through those questions for the students, really to provide some clarity, but the students are going to be answering the questions independently. It's not going to be something that they're going to be sharing their answers or feel as though they have to share out with the class as a whole. The high school students will be working independently on these surveys, the times in which it will take place during the school day, just so everyone is aware. At the elementary level, outside of the core time, there's small group instruction time that's taking place. It's called the WING period. That's K through 5. They're going to utilize that time in order to administer the surveys. At the middle school level, they actually conveniently enough have an advisory period that's coming up the week of the 12th, and they're going to be utilizing their advisory period to execute the surveys. And at the high school level, they're going to be doing the surveys during PE class. That class ensures that all the students that are taking that class, so they'll be able to cycle through and take those surveys. The student surveys will be administered, like I said, the week of December 12th. We identified that week because we wanted to give the parents time to view the surveys prior and then make that decision on if they were going to take the surveys or if they were going to opt out, which we're going to talk about the opt-out process in a little bit. The parents, teachers, community, and alumni survey will be going out, the link will be going out on December 5th to give plenty of time prior to December 20th close for people to choose to take that survey, whether it's parents, teachers, community members, or alumni.
Is it okay if we just go through?
Yeah, it's just a minor point, really. It's just about, you have K through 6 there, is that intentional or should it say K through 5?
Yeah, no, I'm glad you said it. So initially, when we initially were speaking, we spoke about that support for the students. After discussing with Brian Corey, Brian Corey is the principal of Ramper Ridge, he felt as though it was, it's a good practice for the teachers to read through it with the students, so he's at that place of, he's making that decision to go K through 8. But thank you for that clarification, I greatly appreciate it.
So our goal is for tomorrow to share, just to go over the logistics, share the surveys with our community, all three of the surveys, and then we would have the survey go live on December 5th for the adult survey, and then we would administer the survey the week of December 12th, and then that would give us everyone enough time to thoroughly review the surveys as well as properly take the surveys, and that would then close on December 20th.
So because we're surveying such a wide range of age with the different people who are taking part in it, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out what was the best approach to make it age-appropriate. So not only did we try to make it age-appropriate with the language that was used, as Dr. Fair said, within the survey, but also the scale in which they're utilizing is extremely important. So at the K-5 level, they'll be using emojis, because the kids are familiar with emojis, 2022, and just to kind of walk you through it, as you can see on the far right, 5 would be an always, that's the big smile. Most of the time is that grin, the sometimes, I don't know how to say what that face is, and the never, obviously, is the second from the left, and then the I don't know is extremely important as well, because we don't want the students to be forced into a decision if they're at the place where I just don't know, and that's okay. That being said, it's really important that we teach into this type of scale. So our K through 5 teachers will be utilizing this scale for other things prior to the survey. So during morning meetings, oftentimes, they talk about different things, their likes, their dislikes, things that they've experienced, and this is a great opportunity for them to expose the students to this scale to get comfortable with it. So the first time that they're exposed to it will not be the date of the survey. We feel like we'll get a better read and a better understanding from our students, so we felt like that's an important piece of our rollout process. At the 6 through 12 level, obviously, it becomes more complex, but still age-appropriate. It'll be on, obviously, a scale between never to always, so you have never, sometimes, most of the time, then always, and obviously, the questions, we made sure that were, as a collective, we made sure that they were crafted towards those students' experiences.
All right, so we'll talk a little bit more in detail about the administration of the surveys as well as some details related to the surveys in front of you. At the top of this slide, we just want to make it clear that the name of whoever is taking the survey is optional, so that's listed on each of the surveys. And also, to speak to Dr. Dettore's point, not all questions are going to be based on a rating scale. At the end of each category of questions will be the opportunity for whoever's taking the survey to respond or reflect in an open-ended manner. So you'll see the survey is differentiated in language based on the three audiences. So you'll see for question 28 here is a sample of a student K through 5 survey, where the students have the opportunity to share other ideas related to the category. For the student K 612 survey, the students have the opportunity to share additional thoughts and reflection on those categories, and the adult survey for each of the five categories, the adult, the parent, the staff member, the community member, has the opportunity to share additional comments. And this was really important to us as well as our consultant, because we recognize that a lot of these questions, a lot of our student or staff member or parent experience, there's a lot of context, and the open-ended question will allow for whoever is taking the survey to share their thoughts in more detail. So while we're not reviewing the survey question by question here tonight, we're going over, you know, an overview of the survey. We're doing that because, again, our goal is to share the surveys tomorrow morning so that it gives our families ample opportunity to literally go through those questions by questions with their children in the privacy of their home. So, Dr. Dettore, I mentioned the opportunity to opt out. While parents will be able to review these surveys, read through all the questions, and look over these surveys with their child in their own homes, after a parent reviews the survey, they then have the opportunity to make a decision whether they want their child to participate in the survey or not. And we do understand that some families may not feel comfortable having their children participate in the survey, so what we've done is we have an opt-out process, and that would be part of the communication that we share with our parents. If a parent does not want their child to participate, they'll be able to email the building principal directly, sharing their child's name, and there's no need to justify the refusal to participate. Simply sharing the name is enough, and we have a due date so that we can plan accordingly for those opt-out emails to be sent by 5 o'clock PM on December 8. And likewise, we have the opportunity of, when our consultant is onsite for their equity audit visits, we also have the opportunity for families to remove their students from interfacing with our consultant. So let me just speak a little bit about what those onsite visits will look like, and then we'll speak to the opt-out process. So during the week of January 16th, we will have a team of consultants, four of the consultants from Us Squared will be onsite. Those consultants will be, they'll be at our school buildings, they'll be here at the board office, they'll be speaking to a range of cohorts of stakeholders. So they'll be talking to parents, staff members, our leadership team, as well as students. They'll be in classrooms just observing, and they'll be asking some clarifying questions of whoever might be around. Our consultants will be available prior to the start of school and will be working through the late afternoon. So we recognize that we have parents who have signed up for the focus groups, we recognize that they have a work schedule, that we're hoping that if we're able to schedule some of those focus groups in the late afternoon, this will give a broader range of parents the opportunity to participate and share their perspectives. So if a parent does not feel comfortable having their child interface with one of our consultants, what we would have them do is very similar to opting out of the survey participation. A parent can reach out to the building principal simply through email. Again, there's no justification for their refusal to participate, and that would be to the building principal by January 6th, and that will give us 10 days prior to the consultant's arrival onsite to get ourselves organized and to ensure that everything is squared away in the school building prior to their arrival. And as we've been doing throughout this process, all of this information is going to be shared with our public. Dr. Dettore is going to share, you know, the variety of avenues that we're going to be communicating this information, but all of these noteworthy dates, because we're talking about a lot of different timelines, they're going to be communicated in a range of ways.
So in our effort to continue to put out the dates, just so everyone was aware of where we're at with the process, as I shared in the previous slide, we've already taken part in our town halls. The overview of the surveys, obviously, right now, with the goal of sending out all our surveys tomorrow. The adult surveys will be active starting December 5th. Our students will take part in the surveys on December 12th. Just so you're aware, the families will be getting emails from the schools prior to the week of the 12th to let them know exactly when the students will be taking the surveys. So if you're in JK, you'll be getting something from Dr. B saying that 4th grade will be taking it on this day and 5th grade will be taking on that day, just so there's an awareness, just in case there's conversations prior or post, that parents would like to take part in with their children. December 15th, obviously, is an important date for all of us, because as Dr. Fair said, we want as many people as we can to sign up for this so we have a broad variety of voices at the table. So when we send out the information tomorrow, we'll have a link active for people to consider being a part of the focus groups. The surveys will be open until the 20th, and as we said, the in-person audit will begin January 17th and run until the 20th. As Dr. Fair said, and I think it's worth repeating, once the families do get access to these surveys prior to the surveys being taken by the students, we strongly recommend our families talking amongst each other, and if they're comfortable, talking with their children about the questions that are on the survey, so they can develop those conversations, those understandings as a family and as a unit, so the students feel comfortable coming in and taking part in the survey. Where we found success in the past, when I say success, I mean with our goal of ongoing communication and access of information to our community, we developed a tab on our website to house important information specific to this work. We did the same thing with our strategic plan, and we felt there was value there, and we feel like there's value in this as well, being that this is new for everyone. So we added a link to our website, which we will obviously put in our communication in future days, so the parents who might not be able to attend a board meeting or not be aware of something that's going on can go there, access all the important information, whether it's dates, whether it's resources, whether it's videos, so they can be very much aware of what's happening. So I know that oftentimes, the board members are asked various questions about this work. I know that you guys are very much aware of what we're doing, but if by chance, community members are asking for, like, where can we get more information, we chose this as really a warehouse of the work that we're doing, so people can go there for more clarification. That being said, Dr. Fair and I hope that the information that we shared today, this experience, provided clarification not only for the survey itself, but also where it fits the purpose and worth, and really what the next steps are. So, does anybody have any questions?
Anyone have questions? Mr. Gala?
We obviously have access to emails to parents and our staff, but what about other community members? How might they, how could we try to reach out to those voters as well?
Actually, Mr. DeSilva brought that up during one of our meetings, and what we were saying is we're going to try to engage the town council, see what we can do along the lines of access to our community members. I mean, that's something that is an ongoing effort, something that we feel that there's value in.
It's always hard to do.
We could definitely engage Mr. Ferguson as our gaze on, you know, to make sure that he's good and able to help us.
I'll see him tonight, so I can speak to him tonight about that.
I'm glad we've included the alumni perspective. I think that's important in the surveys, and how far back will that go, Dr. Dettore?
Mr. Pascal put on the survey, so just make sure.
So we have two alumni categories on the adult survey. The one alumni category is the last three years, and then alumni prior to those three years. And our goal is to, not to cut you off, but we're going to be utilizing Naviance. I believe we started Naviance maybe nine years ago, maybe longer than that, that there are graduates that have their personal email addresses housed there, that we're going to at least utilize that platform to get the word out and to see what we can garner through that.
Thank you. Mr. DeSilva?
Just to clarify, the, all the information, this is obviously not going to be administered in paper, it'll be digital, and that is, none of this information is being received by the district, it's all being received by the consultant. So the district isn't going to have access to, you know, this sort of, right? Being that on the 612 survey, the first question there is email. If, right, parents, I get that, but for the students, asking for their email, they're making the name optional. If we have students who are looking at the survey, going through the survey, and the student is not comfortable, obviously, I'm assuming they have the option to not participate if they're uncomfortable.
Absolutely, at any time, whether it's a parent who... Absolutely, at any time, if a student, whether it's a parent who chooses to opt out a student or a student goes to take the survey and the student voices, "I'm not, I'm not comfortable doing this." At no point do I feel like it's appropriate for us to force a student to take a survey.
I think when the surveys go out, you know, the kids, it should be, you know, it should be known that that's, you know, that is an option, because you don't want somebody to get halfway through and feel like they have to complete, you know, they should know that, you know, they have an option. And obviously, the parents will have the formal process, which I'm assuming is going to be something that's, you know, when this goes out, there's a very clear process to opt out, right? So, you know, just to make sure that the kids are aware of that as well.
Absolutely.
Hey, I have two names I want to say.
Mr. Coughlin.
I'm sorry, my bad. I wanted to expand on what Kirk was mentioning about emails. Can you talk about the need for collecting emails in the 6 through 12 in the adult surveys?
So in order to identify if there are duplicates or anyone who's, duplicates is the word, it's to ensure that the students have an opportunity to fill it out, but it's done at one time. For the parents, I know that there's, there's parents who have multiple students in the school, but as you can see, you'll see that they have an opportunity to put their email in, and then they can identify which schools are appropriate for them. So again, I know that the concern along lines of putting an identifier was, I don't want people to feel a certain way about us. And that's why it's really appropriate for us as a school district administratively, we do not have access to these answers. So we're clearly going to state that when we're administering these assessments, I mean, these assessments, these surveys. So it's my hope that people can, can share their truth and feel uninhibited as specific to sharing that.
Because at the end of the day, just, I mean, again, it's worthy of repeating, we don't have access to any of this information, right? So even those, those members of our community who signed up for the focus groups, we don't know who they are. We know that there is a high number of people from our community who have shared their interest. We know that we have some staff members who have shared their interests as well, but we don't know who they are, and we don't even know the exactness of who is, who's going to be a part of those focus groups. So anyone, anywhere from the focus group participation to any of the survey results, we're not going to know who said what. And I think that's a really important part of the process, which is why, you know, we had, we originally were looking for an outside entity to take, you know, an outside perspective and a bird's eye view of kind of who we are as MAU, and then share those results to see, you know, what we do with it, and look at some of those themes for consideration in the future.
Actually, Dr. Taro, you led me into my next question, regarding the number of surveys per family. Copland family, it's a family of four, we have two students, two parents. Does that mean the cop and family could ultimately submit six surveys, because we're at two different schools?
The answer to that is yes. Because we spoke to Usquare about this, and Usquare said that depending on your child, they can have very different experiences. So in order to make sure that we're hearing everyone's voice, it's very important to make sure that it's done through the lens of your student, depending on where they are, their specific experience.
And will that be communicated somehow? I know it's not in the top part of the adult survey, there is a little mention in parentheses about filling it out for each school that you represent. But when you look at it from a parent's perspective, does that mean, it will be clear that each parent can submit their own surveys, that it's not just the parents should be doing it together? Again, go back to the cop and family, me and Jen are not going to fill out a survey together, Jen and I are going to do it separately.
Yes, yes.
And that would be communicated, obviously, I'm not communicating it properly?
No, I, no, oh, no, no, my pauses.
But I want it to be clear that that is the case.
My pause was more towards, I'm trying to think of what our letter states, and that's something we'll go back and make sure prior to releasing it, it clearly details that, that specific.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a follow-up to the email question. If someone decides not to include an email, for example, on the 6 through 12, does that mean those survey results won't be included? Do we know that?
I'll be honest with you, I don't, I don't know if they can still submit the survey. I believe they need to input an email address for it to go through.
It looked like it was a required field.
Okay, so just to clarify, that name is optional on those, but email may not be optional. And again, the highest level of confidentiality with emails, but it wouldn't be an optional piece, so I don't want people to get confused by that. Okay, thank you for clarification, Dr. Fair. Any other questions, comments? Okay, um, oh, I'm sorry, I missed a comment.
I'm assuming that Usquare will let us know the number of parents who participated, the number of community members?
Yes, I hope a lot.
We do want to thank all of you for your input. I know that you had a lot to share in terms of your own perspectives, in terms of making this right for our community. I also want to thank our leadership team, who had additional suggestions. I think that it shows to kind of who we are. I feel like this is tailored to MAU, and I believe that, I believe we can do some really great things in terms of what is, what can be yielded from, from our consultants being onsite.
Okay, thank you, Dr. De Toro and Dr. Fair. Shall we move on to new business? Okay, so I have 11A under consideration tonight. I need a motion, Mr. Gallo, and a second, Mr. Kizmarsky. All right, Mr. Blake?
Ms. Sico?
Yes.
Mr. Coughlin?
I just wanted to first thank the administration for allowing us to share input and feedback, and be open to listening. I am totally for the audit, I'm totally for the survey. I have some, I don't say issues, but I have some disagreements in how we're collecting some data and how it's being administered, so for that reason, I'm voting out.
Ms. Devera? Mr. De Silva?
I, so I also want to thank everybody who participated in the updates on this. This was, you know, when it first came out, I think a lot of us had reservations with some of the layout and some of the wording and what was included. And I'm much happier with the amended version. So, you know, while I hate doing special meetings for stuff like this, I think it was the right thing to do to not vote at our last meeting. And obviously, with the timeline that we want to keep too, to make sure that everyone has most opportunity to really consider what we're looking at. I think that we couldn't have waited for the next meeting. So I'm not a fan of doing it this way, but I'm appreciative of the, you know, the process and the opportunity to, like you said, make this look a little bit more like MAU, so, yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, and echo what Mr. De Silva was saying too. The special meeting format is sort of a one-off thing, and it's something that we don't often like doing, but I think it was important to give the community more time to review the process, to be engaged in the process, so that we could still have the community meet the opt-out timeline and give them an opportunity to look through the survey. And I think it was worth doing the special meeting as a result. And I think, again, it's part of our commitment to have as many responses as possible. The more voices that we hear in the survey and all of our focus groups, the outside visits, will better inform the quality of the work, and I think it's, it was worth doing the special meeting for that. So we, I vote yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
And Dr. Forth?
Yes, and I just want to encourage everyone to participate with this survey. Adults, community members, obviously, students. Again, as everyone has said, this is one piece of a larger pie, so to speak, of gathering of information, but without all perspectives, we cannot know what is going on and what perhaps needs to improve, change, et cetera. So this is all fact-finding, and we look forward to the consultants providing that information to us later. So please participate, and thank you to all the board members for coming together for a special meeting to do this in this way. All right, public questions or comments? Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with Biola 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. It's a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. Need a motion to open to the public, Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Mr. De Silva. I see no members of the public, so we can close the meeting to the public. Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Mr. Gallo. We will not require an executive session, so motion to adjourn. Mr. Coughlin, and second by Mr. Kizmarsky. Thank you all very much. Was that, was that good?